Good morning and welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing although the Chair reserves the right to call upon any participant in the audience to pose a question or make comment on a specific item that is on today's agenda. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come into the meeting room along with two sets of the materials that the Board will be reviewing today. We have sets of two minutes, two sets of minutes from meetings, past meetings, as well as items that are under new business which relate to parking and traffic matters. We also have ongoing on our agenda the topic of the request for municipal improvement status for the New Lebanon Elementary School. As of this time, we have no new information. We are awaiting the actions of the Greenwich Board of Education and assessing which location they're going to propose requests for approval and therefore there should not be really any major discussion on that item today. Under updates, I'll comment on the status of the Building Committee and what the next steps are. Item number two is approval of the minutes for the meeting that occurred, the regular meeting on May 28th, and at this time I'll entertain any corrections, amendments to those If there are not any changes or corrections, is there a motion to approve the May 28th regular meeting minutes as presented?
So we'll second.
Okay, without objection. The second set of minutes were for a special meeting that was held on June 5th, and are there any corrections or amendments to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
So move.
Okay. Is there a second?
There is.
Okay, first selectmen updates. For those who are perhaps new to the meeting, under the town charter, the Board of Selectmen is required to hold one meeting a month, and at that meeting, the first selectman is required to update the other selectmen on matters that have transpired during the intervening period. So, under updates, just looking back at some past events and areas of participation, we know that the RTM did meet on June 8th and did not overturn the Planning and Zoning Commission's municipal improvement request for the housing authorities' efforts to rebuild and renovate Armstrong Court. I did attend the Land Use Committee meeting on June 1st, which was quite an extensive meeting. We waited for several hours for the folks who needed to present because they were working through multiple committee meetings. I don't think I need to belabor the issue. The fact is, the outcome that was achieved was a desirous one, and I think it's a testament to the worthiness of the project and the fact that the appellants did not have truly substantive and meaningful reason to reject what is going to be an improvement, not only for the residents who live in Armstrong Court but for the town of Greenwich. To reiterate, this is a facility that's on and at risk lists through the state Housing and Urban Development. The Governor has made financial resources available through the sale of tax credit financing, as has been explained to us, and if we do not act, we jeopardize the opportunity to avail ourselves to that and thereby jeopardize that project. So, I think it's a good outcome for the town of Greenwich, for the residents of Armstrong Court, and frankly, for the residents of Western Greenwich. Coupled with that issue of housing several weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission did act favorably on changes to the regulations which will allow for moderate-income dwelling units to be created through designated zones, primarily within transit corridors. This is an, this is an objective that's been long in the making. As you may recall, we had a Selectmen's Housing Task Force that came out of the Plan of Conservation and Development. That task force made several recommendations with regard to both publicly subsidized, non-market rate housing, as well as incentivizing private entity to come forward and create non-market rate housing. That task force, as an example, did recommend improvements to existing public housing as we see with Armstrong Court, but it also went further to try and develop what's referred to as a community development partnership, which was to incentivize private developers to build certain units that would be available for those individuals who work in municipality, perhaps police, fire, teachers, nurses, and so forth, that there had been considerable study about. They worked, I think, several years now on that aspect through this committee chaired by Mary Ellen Labine, and finally, Planning and Zoning acted upon these new regulations, which, one of the primary changes that occurred within it was that they are not mandatory, they are voluntary, meaning that a prospective developer, owner of property can avail themselves to it, but it's not going to be mandated, and that was some of the objections. So, at least it's a new avenue, and again, I applaud those, Mary Ellen Labine and her entire committee, who worked tirelessly on it. Also had an opportunity last week to go to the AVID end-of-year celebration. Essentially, this is a program that was started by the Greenwich Alliance for Education that provides direct assistance to Greenwich Public School students who come from families where there have not been any first, any college parenting. There's no parents that have gone to college. They start with them in the ninth grade and they work through 12th grade, and they've grown the program exponentially. We saw the graduating class multiply over the last, I think this is the fourth year, they're going into the fifth, I believe, and it was just a wonderful testament to what a community can do when they put private and public resources together and give opportunity to a population of students who normally would not have it. And I think the thing that I came away with is that you see the younger siblings in the audience and you see the aspirational view that they have, that they too can now follow in their siblings' footsteps and go to a four-year college and achieve. So, I applaud all those folks who support the program and who, I think Mara Adalberg at the high school is one of the lead teachers in that, and she's been a great presence. Some of the more cultural events, the first annual Greenwich International Film Festival took place over several days here in town. It certainly brought a lot of attention and notoriety to the community, certainly helps for recognition as to what Greenwich is about in terms of a center for cultural and artistic visual arts. Applaud the founders, all local residents, and I understand they're going to pursue this next year, so thank you to them. Hamilton Avenue School celebrated its 100th anniversary. Went there on Saturday for a couple hours to celebrate during their, what they refer to as Springapalooza, which is like their carnival, what many of the elementary schools have. I believe they've raised about $18,000 from that event, but I was there to commemorate the 100th anniversary as well as recognize Jessica Capoza, who was the founder of this event and has done a lot to help bring additional programs to the school through the PTA fundraising. Last night, attended the recognition for Stuart Adalberg. Stuart has been with the United Way of Greenwich for 27 years, most notably as its president and CEO. He's retiring to go and head up Habitat for Humanity, but was joined with several of their board members in commemorating his service and the impact that he made through his service at United Way in identifying needs within the community and proposing solutions for those needs. So, we wish Stuart well in his future endeavor and know that he's part of our community and we'll see him active in many other venues. On June 2nd, I completed the fourth and final meeting of the, what I refer to as the Fire Panel, Fire Services Panel. It was designed to bring together stakeholders that look at the fire services, namely, the fire administration, the union representatives, designated volunteer, chief representative, representative from the RTM, a town services committee who doubly serves as assistant chief and ambassador on. The purpose of the meeting was to meet with the members of the BET in a more informal setting to look at where we've been the last 10 years within the fire services. It's a very complex topic that often is very hard to provide explanation in the context of a budget submission when you've got competing interests presented on the same nights as they're presenting their requests. So, we were very fortunate that the BET members, nine out of the 12, participated over the four meetings, and additionally, participating was Joan Caldwell from the RTM, who's been part of the discussions on a new Northwest Fire Station. But the BET members were very receptive. They came, we had a good dialogue. The primary discussion was where have we come in the last about 10 years since Chief Szysinski assumed the helm of the fire services back in 2006, and he went through a chronology of all the things that have occurred and what remains undone. What is clear is that health and safety transcends both the residents as well as the career firefighters. When you look at what we were talking about, we're talking about ensuring life safety for the inhabitants of the town. What level of coverage are they receiving based upon the staffing that is currently provided? What component does the volunteers play in assuring that on-scene coverage, and what impacts will we have if we were to create that Northwest Station that has long been identified as a need? Good feedback, good dialogue, and what we are proposing to do next is to assimilate all those comments through Melissa Jones, who's the Senior Management Analyst, and then distribute it and add information that perhaps is not available and ultimately bring forth requests and actions for what will become, I guess, the 16, 17 budget. And so, I think it's a much more collaborative approach and one that I expect the ongoing cooperation to continue. The other person I invited to participate was former First Selectman Jim Lash, and I did so because Mr. Lash was an integral part of the planning for the Northwest Station. His opinions and thoughts on it are widely quoted and widely mentioned, and I thought it'd be best to have him in the discussion so that there can be clear attribution as to what he, in fact, intended and what his thoughts are. So, I appreciate, again, all the folks that participated. Gary Wilson from the District Chiefs, Rich Newman from the RTM, Joan Caldwell, Mr. Lash, John Novak, Matt Brooks, Mr. Kik and Mr. Szysinski, and Leslie, anyone else I left out? I think that rounded it out. And then the nine BET members, the ones who were not, did not participate. Mr. Johnson indicated his inability, he's not going to be continuing on the Board. He was very clear, so he therefore wasn't going to participate. And Mr. Huffman and Mr. Goldrick responded they would participate but did not appear at the meetings in which they were scheduled. Eversource. I see Tracy Alston here, our Community Relations Specialist. She is the face of Eversource for the town of Greenwich, and we're very thankful for that. We had a meeting with Eversource on June 9th. This was a meeting that they hosted here, and the purpose of that meeting was to give an update to the Greenwich Substation and Line Project. They reviewed many of the concerns that we put forth, both through the planning and zoning and comments directed to the planning and zoning that went into the municipal consultation. Those concerns focused on validating project need, looking at the substation facade and its location, the impact to Kinsman Lane, and what, if any, material changes they have to make in and around the Koskob Substation, which it appears now they don't have to move the fencing and so forth. So, that meeting included our town planner, Katie DeLuca, our Conservation Director Denise Savageaux, our new Wetlands Director Patricia Sesto, as well as our Superintendent of Parks and Trees, Bruce Spayman. Did I leave anyone out? Oh, Amy Seabird, our Commissioner of Public Works. So, where we go from here is that they will be submitting their application to the Connecticut Siting Council, I believe, on June 26th. Their commitment to hold another public information meeting remains, although it will be after the public, the Siting Council submission, and that date of their submission is, I believe, June 26th, if I recall correctly, roughly. And they will likely, we've set July 15th in this room for the public information meeting, the second one, which is essentially a setup of all different stations that show the technology they're going to be using to implement this. It's a very complicated project. It involves a lot of engineering, and there are environmental impacts that we're concerned about, but they'll be going through all that for public edification. And then, of course, the Connecticut Siting Council is required and will conduct a formal public hearing with the trans, you know, on the record sometime, perhaps in the late 2015, early, according to this calendar, I would say 2015, early 16 the latest, and then reach a decision. So, that is ongoing. Also, this time of year is when departmental managers receive their employee performance evaluations. This is a responsibility that is not only of the First Selectmen, who has 12 direct reports, but to all the volunteer boards. So, your Witherall Board, your Land Use Boards, your Social Services Board, and Health Board, all collectively have a responsibility to evaluate the performance of their respective department head. And the way the system works is that there's a collaborative process in setting annual goals. If the employee has satisfactory performance and meets those goals, they're eligible for up to a 2.5% increase over their current salary. If, for some reason, they don't meet those goals, they are going to get a 1.5% increase. So, essentially, the 1% is something you have to attain by achieving your objectives. And so, I am about halfway through the folks who report in to me, and it's been a good process in getting a lot of communication and frankly, candid communication with the department heads about what's transpired in the course of the year and how they're addressing issues externally to the public, but also how they're addressing issues internally with their reports and employees that are represented by unions. So. Future events tomorrow morning, there is going to be, I believe it's got to be the sixth one, the Filipino Independence Day Flag Raising. Like most groups that make up our wonderful community, this is an opportunity for those of Filipino ancestry descent to come and celebrate this important day in their country's heritage here in the town of Greenwich. Also, we'll be next week celebrating the service of Carol Burns, who you'll hear about perhaps later in our meeting under nominations. Carol is the Executive Director of River House, formerly Greenwich Adult Daycare. She's retiring after 20 years of service, and there's going to be a celebration of her service. Of course, next week's graduation, and our own Colleen Bennett, our interns, and again, tell me your name.
Walker.
Walker. Walker will be graduating, and so we want to congratulate you. Are there any other interns from the high school here? These are Greenwich's finest. These are the future.
It's your turn.
I think Leslie will attest, you know, you had four interns, correct, five, and we were fortunate with Colleen that this is a really wonderful group of young people. They've got a lot of expertise that impresses and helps, and so hopefully, your experience was a good one, and we wish you all the best in your future success and expect you'll be making your mark further somewhere, whether it be locally, nationally, internationally, but good luck. This afternoon, there will be a Youth Commission meeting. This commission is up and running. Their biggest achievement to date has been the salvation of Safe Rides, and as we wind down this year, we are going to be focusing on their future objectives, which really will kick off in September with the new school year. June 16th, we're having a meeting of the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities in Greenwich. I believe our featured guest is going to be our Parking Services Director Rita Azarliant, who is going to be discussing some of the concerns or just information that people have regarding parking and handicap accessibility. We previously had Alan Minelli pop in, and he talked about the efforts to make our public buildings and facilities compliant to ADA. So, if there are any issues that people have that relate to any type of impairment, this is a group that's looking to research it and advocate on behalf of that community. And finally, finally, there will be an organizational meeting for the New Lebanon Building Committee next Thursday, June 18th, at 11:30 a.m. Under the provisions of the Charter or Code, the first meeting is called by the First Selectmen for the sole purpose of having the committee organized, and now that we have seven members appointed, five by this Board and the RTM and two, one from BET and one from Board of Ed, they're ready to begin their long tour in building a new school, and I see Claire Cigellin is with us, and she's one of those members. It's a public meeting, and I believe the agenda will consist of electing a Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk, and perhaps the committee thinking about a schedule of meetings and when they want to meet. And one issue that is more ministerial is who's going to handle keeping all the minutes in notes, something we should get everybody to think about in advance. That concludes the updates. There are two pending tax appeals and one pending claim that will be discussed in executive session. At this time, we will not be holding our June 25th regularly scheduled meeting. We will be scheduling perhaps another meeting, a special meeting, next week to respond to actions by the Greenwich Board of Education and their requests for municipal improvement for New Lebanon. And I also point out that our Board is going to be ably represented on the Building Committee by Selectman Marzullo, so we thank you.
Sure.
And that's hopefully your, yeah. We also have to notify the gentleman from the RTM who was appointed, or as ex officio.
Next Thursday.
Thursday at 11:30 a.m. One other thing, missed it. Tuesday night, I attended a meeting here of the Greenwich Board of Ethics. You know, the town has an ethics code. The committee has been working over the last several years to tighten it up, make sure it's more widely understood, and to that end, the Chairman Paul DeBarry has drafted a letter that will go out to all town officers. Town officers are defined as not only the elected and appointed officials but also employees, and basically, it's a process by which you file only if you have a potential, I don't want to say conflict, but it's a disclosure, if you have a financial interest. So, it's very focused on reporting and disclosing any financial interest you may have with the town or a direct relative may have with the town, and I think they decipher that as being like if you live in the same household. And so, there's a form that gets filed. What we were talking about at the meeting is to facilitate the ease of this process. Right now, they mail out paper copies to everybody and anyone, and people are sure, do I fill it out or don't I? Some people fill it out when they don't have to, and they create a mountain of paper. The thought being is that this can be done electronically and that people could be sent a link, they could check it off if they need to, and it then catalog, they don't have to manage papers. So, Mr. DeBarry was talking with our legal department, who was represented by Mr. Fox or town attorney, as well as our HR Director, and we spent about 45 minutes with them Tuesday night just discussing that. But I did bring it up at our monthly staff meeting to ask town departments to remind their Board members if they do have any potential need to disclose to please do so in accordance with the code. Okay, moving to item number four, old business. As I said, we really don't have anything new from, yes?
I have a chart that was passed to Board of Ed on the night of the meeting. Could you share it with me?
Sure. If you could just tell us your name and so we have it for the record.
I'm Dana Sanchez.
Great, thank you. Well, welcome. No, welcome very.
Welcome.
Dana Sanchez.
Hi.
New Lebanon parent. And this is just the pros and cons of describing the sites, just so you're aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And again, we're likely to have another meeting next week once we get the request. Yes?
I just wanted to provide a comment.
Sure. Oh, okay.
Hi, my name's Oscar Rodriguez. I'm also a New Lebanon parent, member of the BNA, and also a member of the Friends of the Schubert Library. I just wanted to provide, I guess, a little bit of an update. I think that there, over this process, one, a lot of the different plans were being presented in public form. There seemed to be a perception that the Byram community was very, very against building or using Site Plan B. Within the last few weeks, I know that Nicole O'Connor, who is the representative of the Byram Neighborhood Association, had sent a message to the Board of Education, also including this selectmen group, indicating that they, while they have some concerns, they are looking to see if community specifications can be incorporated into the overall process, which includes the educational specifications. And in her message, and I would highlight just a few things, part of their community specifications is that the new plan would maintain a village green, defined as the center of the site, of adequate size, best to be used for multiple purposes, as a lot of the residents in the area say it is being used now. Develop a building of the proper proportion and location so that the height doesn't dominate the Byram landscape, but instead fits the character of Byram. Position a school, a school building has to maintain the maximum visibility to the overall site to promote safety of the children outside of school hours and discourage crime. And the other one I'd like to highlight for this Board is minimize the impact to the current students of New Lebanon School. In her message, she indicated that Scheme B or Plan B as it is currently drawn would not be aligned with the Byram comprehensive plan. Scheme D as it is currently drawn would meet many of the community specifications, but they think that we can do better, and the New Lebanon community also agrees that we can do better. With that in mind, I think it just shows that the BNA and the New Lebanon community seem to be more in alignment with what they feel is best for the choice of the site. There doesn't seem to be such a substantial division within Byram. And I also wanted to let this Board know that since your last special meeting from last Friday, that last Friday, that we have secured close to 400 signatures in support of Plan B. We will continue to go out and try to get more signatures in order for support of this. But I think this is an important update to try to clarify that there doesn't seem to be such a substantial division between the Byram community. So thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Just clarification, so the BNA, because I read that too, and it seems they did not take, they did not endorse either site, correct?
They are not correct. They did not endorse either site. I think what, at least my interpretation of what they... And I was one of the individuals that did meet with Nicole O'Connor, I think that's referenced in the email. My name wasn't mentioned, but along with Claire Kilgallen. They did not endorse either site. You are correct. I think that what they're saying is that they want it to be objectively viewed so that the best site is picked. Now, when you look at the different community specifications that they've indicated, these are things that the NL community, New Lebanon community, is also in alignment with. So while, I agree, I'm not trying to give the impression that Plan B was specifically chosen by the BNA. I'm just trying to point out that there seems to be a better understanding of the different options that are available, and it doesn't seem that the community is so divided as it seemed to be interpreted before.
Well, great, thank you. I would say thank you for your update.
Thank you very much.
As I said earlier, the Board of Ed will be in the position to make the request. Our option is to say yea or nay on whatever they decide. And really, they're the point of departure for assimilating what they, in their best judgment, view as the interests of the community today. And again, as I said, I think everyone has to keep in mind what's in the best interest for the long term. And I think that's often, for all of us, not just on this issue, not always easy because we cede in the present and we cede in the emotion and the energy versus rationally taking a step back and saying, whoa, wait a minute, what is going to be the least, have the least variable, the least exposure? So that's, I think, what's going on. And one thing we know is that there's a deep commitment to get this done, just to get it done, quote unquote, right. You know, what's... And again, I think a lot of this is predicated on what our experience has been with other projects in town. I think that's why we're seeing such abundance of caution, is that, you know, there's been such hype in the media about all the things that Greenwich has had problems with. You don't always hear about the ones that we haven't had problems with, that's just the nature of the beast. But, so I think that's why it's so much the issue de jour is focusing in on all the various elements. And I think we see that from the Board of Ed, the BET, and this board, and the citizenry. So we thank you, because this is, I know it takes time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under new business, we have a request for a temporary road closure. This is for the annual St. Rocks Feast, which will be held on August 12th through the 15th. With us, I see we have Jackie Budkins representing the St. Rock Church in that community. The traffic plan as laid out in the materials submitted to us, call for six officers deployed at various locations within that community, as well as what equipment will be provided in terms of traffic courses and the dates and times.
Please, Ms. Budkins?
If you could please just come forward, Jackie, and just say your name and what you're telling us so that it's formally on the record.
Hi, everyone. Jackie Budkins, for those who do not know me. So this feast, the layout that you have is the same layout we've used for the last several years.
Great.
For the whole week. We also support the summer school by having cops there during the day during our feast week as well.
Oh, good. Okay. Great, thank you. Are there any questions about this? Okay, is there a motion to approve the request for temporary road closure during the period of August 12th through 15th from the hours prescribed on the submission over those days?
Second.
Without objection. You're welcome. Okay, the next item before us is from the Department of Parking Services. Since assuming her position last July, correct? Rita Azraelian, our Director of Parking Services, has been reviewing many of the various actions that have occurred over the last several years that relate to residential parking, snow route designations, and making sure that those actions were done and compliant with the code, meaning the actions took place, but the codes in some cases were never updated. So there was an ministerial oversight. So part of what you're presenting today, part addresses that, and then part looks at issues in specific areas where there's been recurring issues of, I don't know how best to describe it, repeat, repeat offenders? I don't know if that's even fair to say, but people who park where they shouldn't park.
Concerns within the neighborhood more so. It's a two-part request today. One is to amend the limited parking section and numbers one through three are simple housekeeping, you know, things that shouldn't be taken out of the code because it would be enforcement, it wouldn't work. So this is going to particularly focus on amendment, request to amend number two and four. There is an update. I actually spoke to a couple of residents. Let me give you a little bit of history. In 2005, the town received a lot of complaints from the homeowners of Brook Crossway, Fairview Terrace, Nedley Lane, and Walker Court. And this is due to the fact that there is Blimebrook High School, which is on the New York border side, that is immediately affected, and all those residents were affected by the students parking at their properties. So the former First Selectman, Jim Lash, Peter Crumbine, and Penny Monahan, as the Traffic Authority amended the code, or so it was. So there was a public hearing, it was voted on, but in terms of the signage, the minutes from the meeting and the town charter and code, it does not reflect, none of it is, it doesn't agree. So this is an effort to update the code and make sure that it all agrees between the signage and the town charter and code. And one of the things that I did is try to reach out to all of the neighborhoods in that area because, as you know, 10 years is quite some time and the traffic, the area, and the parking may have changed. So it'd be unfair to maintain the regulations that were put in place back in 2005. So one letter was sent out to all four residents and asking them to vote on the current regulations that were on the street or lighter, whether it be 11 to 2 or 9 to 9. We received letters and subsequently following the letters, we followed up with a letter letting them know that this is what has been approved, this is what has been voted unanimously by the neighbors and so forth. I actually received a letter yesterday by the residents on Walker Court, asking me to review their recommendations. So I'm actually pulling that off of the agenda, so I have an updated one. You're only going to vote on Fairview Terrace and Nedley Lane and not on Walker Court because the residents feel strongly. Walker Court and Brook Crossway, I'm actually going to follow up and meet with the neighbors to get a consensus because this is something that I've told them that if they don't make a decision, then we can't enforce any of the regulations, so it'd be open parking. So I told them they would have to make a decision one way or another, whether to have 11 to 2, 9 to 9, or no signs at all. So that's still out there. We're hoping to get a resolution sometime by the end of this month or the following month. So that's, that, the second request, a resolution, deals with snow emergency streets. Throughout the course of the year, DPW recognizes certain streets that are difficult to get through, and it was recognized that Spring Street was one of the streets that were very narrow. And in agreement with one of the homeowners, it was decided to make it a snow emergency route rather than eliminate all of the parking. And that's agreed by DPW and the individual because of the narrowness of the road, and it would all be impacted during the winter months when snow would have to be removed. There's a map in your packet.
Off of Old Field Point Road, going to those condominiums?
Old Track Road, yeah. And at the end of Spring Street, yeah. It actually turns into private condo area, so we are not allowed in that area. So you can't really make a turn. So oftentimes, we are pulling into the private condo area just so we can make a turn and back the trucks out. So there should be a map in your packet. There wasn't a map, oh, I'm sorry.
There's been a lot of redevelopment down there, which adds to the volume of cars. I mean, it's been good. I mean, it's good what's been done, but it just...
It's the private property that abuts the town property, so it's not a dead end. It goes into a private property area and the snow, we can't push the snow onto the private property area and we have to remove it, and it's very narrow. So if a car is parked on that street, you can't get a snow plow through.
Right. So just to review, so today, to take this one for Spring Street, is added to the snow routes?
Mm-hmm.
That's...
So I'm just amending the snow schedule to add Spring Street onto the snow schedule.
So you need a motion and approval of that separate? We'll do that separate from the other things?
Yes.
And then the other thing, just to review what you're saying you wanted to consider today was, you don't want to take up, which street again?
The street that I'm removing is Brook Crossway. So this is the updated one. So instead of five, you have four.
Oh, I see, so...
So you're removing Brook and then putting...
I'm not, I'm not doing anything.
We have an I know residence, did you want to comment at all?
Sure.
And so, which, we're not doing Brook Crossway today?
No.
Okay. Good morning, welcome.
I live on Fairview Terrace, lived there for 46 years, born and raised in Greenwich, a lot longer than that. I met with Rita about a month and a half to two months ago when we got the first letter, and I was very confused. Actually, I'm still confused. I was the originator of the petition when this first started, myself, Rudy and his wife, Peg. When the parking situation, it started at Fairview Terrace. Directly across the street was a wooded area. Westchester County bought it. They created first a mammoth park, and they put an addition on the high school to incorporate the junior high, which made it a campus. And they disallowed the children at that point to park there. Suddenly, they don't have a place to park. So they parked on our street, they parked on Nedley Lane, they parked on Walker Court, they parked on Etta Lane, they parked on Brook Crossway, to the point where we couldn't even get in and out of our driveways. And we were constantly on the phone with the police. So we set up several meetings with Jim Lash, Penny Monahan, Peter Crumbine, and they asked us to do a petition of all four streets directly across in the park and the school, which we did. I think we had, what, three, four meetings room?
Yeah.
Something like that. And where I'm confused with what Rita had spoken to me a month ago was that we received letters, we sat here during the selectmen's meetings, and at first, Jim Lash proposed 11 to 2 to combat the school parking, which was okay, it did work. But then Penny Monahan came up with a better idea. She proposed 9 to 9 for a couple of the streets because we were getting bombarded with soccer, baseball, then they have nationals where they bring in two dozen porta potties for weekends at a time. So we still get the overflow from the park. The 9 to 9 has saved us and helped us. Whether the other streets want it or not, that's up to them. I don't live on the other streets. My son does live on Walker Court. I've talked to him extensively about it, and he asked me, he said, you know, I don't understand, they sent letters. He said, I talked to everybody and nobody wants 9 to 9, we're being told it's going to be 9 to 9. But that's his problem, not mine. So where my confusion comes in is, and I wish I brought my letters with me, but I didn't, I received a letter from the selectman at the time stating that Fairview Terrace was 9 to 9, Nedley Lane, I believe, at one point was 9 to 9, but then changed to 11 to 2, Brook Crossway was 11 to 2, and Walker was 11 to 2. Then mysteriously, the signs disappeared on Walker, supposedly. But anyway, suddenly, the parking starts again. Now, unfortunately, what really has brought this to a head for the second time around is one individual, and you know who that is. And someone who has many cars and not enough property to handle the cars, and some of the cars are quite ugly and large, and he's parking them in front of everybody's houses, and the neighbors are justifiably upset now. We don't want to see campers in front of our house because you don't have enough land. Either build a bigger house or a bigger land or get rid of some junk, but that's not my thing. Anyway, I'd like to get clarified today as to exactly what the limits are going to be on what street, because I'm still not exactly sure, you know?
That's a good point.
Honestly, my biggest concern is, we have 14 houses on our street. I've spoken with every single person on the street, and with the exception of, I believe, two, everybody overwhelmingly wanted 9 to 9 because we have to deal with, the school is no longer an issue, the park is a very big issue, especially now that the weather's good, because now we have soccer every night, three little league baseball teams. And I think, Peter, you're familiar because you're from Glenville.
Yeah.
The driveway's right across the street from us. And even though it's supposed to be for emergency only and there's six handicap spots, people will go anything not to traverse those stairs on the other side of the stadium, because there's something like 30 something stairs you got to go up to get to the school parking up above. So that's really the issue. So all I'm looking for is clarification and hopefully our street stays the same.
So you would like it to stay 9 to 9?
It's currently 9 to 9, has been so for the last almost 10 years, and we'd like it to stay that way.
And that's Brook Crossway?
No, that's Fairview.
Fairview, Fairview.
Brook Crossway, right now, we have a lot, in all honesty, in the whole area, we have a lot of new people who don't have the history of how this happened, didn't live through the cars, didn't live through the park. Right now, Brook Crossway's getting a little taste because the parkgoers know they can't park or shouldn't park on Fairview. Well, 20 feet away is Brook Crossway, so they park there. And every now and then, somebody comes to me and starts crying, well, you know the people in town, go talk. Uh-uh. Everybody had the opportunity to come to these meetings us today and say, hey, look, we have a problem, this is one way we can correct it. I don't see anybody here, with the exception of three or four. And if 11 to 2 serves their needs, wonderful. I know what serves our need, I know what our problem is, the park is our problem.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
So, thank you, Rita, if you could just, so take one street at a time.
One street at a time, okay.
Please.
Fairview Terrace, originally, I have actually the original legislation, Fairview Terrace is going to keep 9 to 9. Yeah. Fairview Terrace was from 11 to 2, they changed it to 9 to 9 in 2006. The signs are correct, so Fairview Terrace is, I think, is the only street that was correct from the minutes from 2005. Everything else was incorrect. So Fairview Terrace is going to remain 9 to 9. What I'm doing...
Right, but the question is, so do we have to do anything or not? Technically, I mean, do we have to technically do something to make it copaesthetic, like sign?
You just have to sign off on that because...
So do we have to vote that today, that we're reaffirming 9 to 9 and then sign the paper?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So just to keep record, that's step one.
Fairview Terrace is 9 to 9, Nedley Lane is 11 to 2. And the other two streets are off because I need to talk to them.
Okay. So essentially, there's four streets?
That are affected.
Two are essentially just affirming what is the status quo with the 9 to 9.
What should be, yes, with the residents.
11 to, just to get it, so it's properly within the code.
So it's proper in the code so that if someone challenges it, they go to the code. We can challenge.
Uni-code.
Right.
It's there.
Also, to write tickets.
Right.
If it's not in the code, we can't write tickets, so that's a big problem. And just to let you know that the individual you're referring to, I've been working with extensively and making other accommodations, so hopefully we'll have that taken care of.
I've met with that individual as well. I'll say, I think, I think we should just be transparent and clear who it is. It's Jim Riley. And Jim is a good and dear friend of Ken Borse. In fact, maybe perhaps you could be persuasive. I actually met with him this week. I spent about an hour with Jim on Monday, and, you know, he has issues because his neighbors have brought his issues to the zoning and to nuisance. And our nuisance ordinance is a very, I would say, loose one in that it's not, you know, you must, it gives people the opportunity to readdress and correct. In his case, I mean, for example... In his case, I mean, for example, vehicles, he does have a lot of vehicles, and believe it or not, he maintains the registration on all of them, he produced it, and so that, in a sense, validates to me to keep it, and I mean, that's not on the agenda today, but I think we're all, it's like a family, you got to kind of put everything on the table, it may be a little unpleasant, but no one's saying anything bad about Jimmy, just, he has, he has a proclivity to like to keep things, so.
He's our little cousin.
So, anyway, we won't, I guess, anymore.
So, I, I am.
You've been very good to him, I think you tried to give him a space somewhere else.
I, we're hopefully going to get him a space, we're hopefully going to get him a space in a parking lot, in, offsite, so we're working on that, I'm waiting to hear back, and hopefully, that should be resolved until he leaves. He does go away for a period of time.
Yeah.
To another location, so.
To another location?
To another country, yeah. Yeah, I know, so we're working on that completely.
The Nedley Lane, Monday through Friday, it's, that's not Saturday and Sunday, that's correct?
No, it's, it's 11 to 2, Monday through Friday.
So, essentially, there are three things that we would act upon today. One is to add Spring Street to the snow emergency route, to affirm, make sure I get this, Fairview, 9 to.
Fairview, 9 to 9.
9, Monday through Sunday. And Nedley Lane, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And the other two streets, we'll look at.
We're working on them. Yep, correct.
Got it. Now, everybody clear? Yes, Sir Rudy?
Rudy Resencheck, Fairview Terrace. Before we put the signs up over there, we had the school, as Tony was saying, it was real serious, and one morning, I was going out, and some woman was walking by, and she said, look at that over there, she says, the school bus had to back up from Brook Crossway onto Fairview Terrace, which is an illegal thing for the school bus to do, and it's because the way the cars and the kids had parked, they just jumped out when they were late for school, and they couldn't care less. So, that, that's the reason that we were after this, you know, we couldn't get in and out of our yards, and it was just a hassle, and whatever you can do, we thank you very much.
Okay. I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty straightforward now, and, great, so is there any other comments? If not, so can we have a motion to, I guess, item B is first, which is to amend the Chapter 14, Article 5, Schedule 3, traffic ordinances, limiting parking on Fairview Terrace from 9 a.m. to 9 p.m., Monday through Sunday, and essentially, this is a codification of what was already adopted by the prior Board of Selectmen back in 2006? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, without objection?
Thank you.
The other is to codify Nedley Lane, both sides, from King Street to Dead End, no parking between there, it's 11 a.m. to 2, Monday through Friday. Is there a motion on that?
Second.
Without objection. And then finally, item C, Department of Parking Services, sorry, can't read this, need glasses, is to add Spring Street to the list of snow emergency and alert routes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Without objection. So, this is the doc, this is the right one, we'll sign it right now, just not. And then Rita, just to make sure, if you could just please look at this, is this the one with the blue, which has the four, the correct one, or do you want?
Four, yeah.
Where's the sign, is there a signature page for this, or is it?
It's this one, the bottom is the signature page.
It's the third attach.
Yeah, so it's, you're, you're going through, you're remaining two.
All right, so this, so this is page one, this is page two?
Yeah.
So, it's the 10th, right?
11th.
11th?
Do you want to have this for your record?
No, I know where it is. It's, this will do a little.
If you make sure that this is the right one?
Yeah.
I see, so this was the old one, we can destroy this.
Yes.
I just want to, I didn't, I didn't do it under updates, there's always something that comes up. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of spending about an hour and a half on Almyra Drive, and I know, Leslie, you've been a featured writer on this, as many other things, so Drew is, also has devoted years to this issue, I think, too, listening to people. You started, you've also begun to, I'm just going to just quickly add it under this, because quickly, the issue really on Almyra Drive, which is in the Glenville Pemberick section of Greenwich, is that there's pedestrian safety concerns, it is a cut-through from the Post Road over to King, to many of the office parks, there's some intersecting residential streets, there's Arthur Street, there's Hawthorne Street South, and there's Rockland Place. They, and I'm not good with directionals, to say, they're perpendicular to Almyra, how's that? Does that make sense, perpendicular? Almyra goes down a very steep hill, interestingly, the gas company was doing work on that hill yesterday, and I went around, went down it, I mean, it's bad normally, but this was like, you had this much to get by. So, Jim Michael went out, met with Charlie Jurgens, and several of the other parents and residents, and on the table are several options to mitigate the issues. Some of them are going to require further study, but again, these are under consideration, underscore exclamation point, I don't want to misrepresent anything here. So, one of the options is to move the bus stop back to its prior location, which would be on Hawthorne Street South, thereby take the kids off of Almyra, which, there were a number of blind spots, and in fact, I actually have all the pictures on my phone, too bad I couldn't plug it in, I could show you, but it's, it's, there's trees, I mean, the kids hiding behind it, you don't see it. Now, the traffic was slowing down, because they saw a crowd of people. So, that's one action. The other action is to consider making Almyra one-way going down, which would then impact all of the traffic in that area, they'd have to look at Mozier. If you know Mozier, it's a much wider descent, there's no current curve, current curve to it, but they have to look at the traffic patterns, and how it would impact the whole area. The topic of speed humps has come up, and there's a lot of consideration on those, I know Drew, not to put him on the spot, but, I mean, emergency services have an integral part of reviewing these, because it impacts what they do, seriously, particularly medics, I think, as I was told, unless it's changed, but if you're doing compression, they could. So, that's still a desirous outcome that I think the residents would like to see. They'd like to see the stop signs put, like, right in the middle of Almyra, and it would be a three-way stop. The problem is that there's the state traffic warrants that we must conform to, and according to DPW Traffic Engineering, those, that street doesn't meet those warrants. So, that's still out there as desirous, but not likely. A sidewalk was talked about, again, a sidewalk to where? If you think about it, if you're just going to build a sidewalk for a little stretch, you still have the issue of the kids getting off the sidewalk, and then where are they going to? They're going to a place that doesn't have a sidewalk. And also, to the park, there'd be no way, in, at least my opinion, to put a sidewalk down Almyra Drive. I mean, it would be, you'd have to take major property, yeah, yeah, the incline. So, the other thing is speed limit signs, I think that is attainable. I know that we have several, that they get rotated throughout the town, I know that they have been waiting for those to be put up, but I think people's, and the other thing is that there's parking on the, would it be the west side? The north side, the north side of Almyra, and it works two ways. In some respects, if you have parking, it narrows the road, and it slows traffic down, according to the engineering folks, but it also is very odd, because if you have a car full of kids, they all have to get out on the traffic side, because you're up against the bank, and I said, for me, I would personally, I would take the parking out. The issue that's going on in that neighborhood is not like most neighborhood issues today, is we're seeing a resurgence and redevelopment with new homeowners coming in, many of them are going to rental properties, there are a number of people who have service businesses that they are able to run out of their house. I witnessed yesterday, an interesting, interesting thing, I parked on Hawthorne South and walked over to Arthur, and I saw a window washing truck, I saw two window washing trucks parked in the driveway, and someone waiting, and then the next thing you know, a car pulls up, a guy gets out with a cooler, goes over to the truck, gets on board, another guy gets out of a truck, gets on the bus, and the neighbors confirmed to me that, yes, one of their neighbors runs a window washing business, I believe is, is, he's a firefighter in Westchester County somewhere, I noticed the I, is it I A F F on the vans, but needless to say, God bless, it's, it's the economy, he's working, but think about that corresponding effect, one house, at least three cars parked on those streets that were no longer there before. Carry that forth throughout different areas of town, and you do have the problems that, is why we have a Parking Services Director. It's all yours, Rita, you could, so, the point is, Drew worked on this, John's been briefed, I've been certainly briefed, I think everyone's endeavoring to try to come up with a workable solution, and be, and, and not expose the town, and the comment that was made yesterday, said, listen, the only way the town will do something is unless something happens, and we hope that's not the case, we certainly don't think that way, but we also have to recognize, if we put stop signs where they're not meeting the state warrants, and someone gets rear-ended and gets injured, they're going to equally take the town to task, so we have to try to work through a, a resolution, but I want to say thanks to Leslie for her coverage, and her willingness to put in the hours to go out and bring these issues forth. That concludes new business. Under item six, appointments and nominations, do you have the date, Mike? Is it?
It's 2016.
We have a opening on the Commission on Aging. We mentioned Ms. Carol Burns earlier, Carol is interested in serving on the Commission on Aging. I think that her background is uniquely qualified to support ongoing services for the aged, and I would move her nomination for a term, we believe it is expiring 3/31/16, so it's a short term, she's filling a vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Great choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes, any other nominations, Mike?
I'll just want to do stack.
We have to look at the affiliations on that.
Okay.
It's not clear to me. Okay, that concludes the appointments and nominations, we will be having an executive session, we're just going to take a five-minute recess to allow the legal counsel to attend.